Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a quorum, so this meeting will come to order. But because we're using auxiliary rooms as well, the people are still filtering in on to the other rooms, so I'm going to suspend the start of the meeting for about two or three or four minutes. And obviously, we can't start it without Joan, because it wouldn't be legal. Isn't that right, Mr. Town Council? That's correct, he says. What do you think? Ready to rock and roll? So, a quorum having been ascertained for the annual town meeting, our town's 155th annual -- such annual town meeting. This meeting will now come to order. With that, as we always do before every meeting, could I ask you to please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag? Those in the other rooms, please just stand. I don't think they have a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Town warrant to Commonwealth of Massachusetts Middlesex Squire Sheriff. To either of the constables of the town of Hudson and the county of Middlesex, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Hudson, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to assemble in Hudson High School, Brigham Street, in said town on Monday, the 22nd day of June in the year 2020, at 7:30 o'clock in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles to it. And in your hand warrant, you have the 40 articles that we will be acting upon tonight. And then, moving upon -- on to page 28. It's in here somewhere. I saw it yesterday. And you are also directed to notify and warn said inhabitants to meet at the several undesignated polling places in their respective precincts in said town to wit. And in your hand warrant, you have the usual seven precincts on Monday, June 29th, at 2020, at 7:00 in the forenoon, then and there to choose by ballot the following town offices for the ensuing year. And in your hand warrant, you have the 13 specific offices for election -- that are up for election this year. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up copies attested by you in the following places. One at the post office, one at the townhouse, one at the office of the town clerk, and at six other public places in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting, and by publication in a newspaper published in said town. Here I fail not to make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk on and before time of holding said meeting, given under hands this 24th day of February in the year 2020, Joseph J. Durant, Chairman, Scott DePlessis, Vice Chairman, James D. Quinn, Clerk, Fred P. Lucy II, and John Parent. And constables return. For the annual town meeting to be held June 22nd, 2020, posted June 5th by virtual notification issued by the Board of Selectment on June 5th, 2020. I did post the warrant on June 5th in the following places. One at the office of the town clerk, one at the post office, one at the townhouse, and at six other public places in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Publication was made in the Hudson Sun on June 11th, 2020. Said newspaper being published in the town of Hudson. Signed, Michael Schreiner, Constable for the Town of Hudson. Now, as I do before every town meeting, I have comments. And no voter shall speak more than twice upon any question without first obtaining leave of the meeting except to correct an error or to make an explanation, nor until all others who have not spoken upon the question and desire to do so shall have been given an opportunity therefore. All motions shall be reduced to writing before being submitted to the meeting, if required by the moderator. No one is to speak unless you are first recognized to do so by the moderator. Please state your name and address before speaking. Since we have two auxiliary meeting rooms and they are a whole part of this town meeting, they also have microphones. And anytime they wish to speak, they can go to that microphone and speak. We're just going to have a slightly different queuing effect to speak. We have a microphone here and a microphone there. If you wish to speak, you come down, speak at one of the two microphones. I would like to have no more than one person standing in line ready to speak next. I'm going to have to look over at the screens to see if there's somebody standing in line, and hopefully you'll be able to see them or at least hear them. And when it comes time for a vote, obviously, their vote counts just as much as your vote, and that will be taken appropriately. But each room has a deputy moderator in it to regulate the affairs. And again, I'm wearing a mask. Generally, you can't even understand me if I don't have a mask. But in any room, if you can't hear what's going on, please speak up, and we'll try to make adjustments. In addition to that, for this town meeting, I have moderators' notes for this town meeting. And the most important thing, there's going to be a test on this, by the way. Passing grade is 85, so nobody leaves. We have the superintendent of schools here to regulate that. And it's imperative we thank those who made this night possible, specifically our executive assistant and chief financial officer, Tom Moses, our health inspector, Kelly Calo, and most importantly, our town clerk, Joan Wardell. So with that said, I'd like to recognize superintendent of schools,
Good evening. Please join me in a moment's silence for the untimely passing of Mrs. Erin McKay, beloved teacher at Forest Elementary School.
Thank you. Also, as we do each year, we read the name of the deceased town offices from the previous years. And they are Anne Samos from the school department, Anne El Campbell from the finance department, Dominic Arena from police chief -- police department, Eleanor Noonns, school department secretary, Dorothy Barrera, elections, Philip Hoben from civil defense, Jamie O'Brien from DPW, Maria Isabel Friestasilva from the school department, Julian Duvois from Light and Power, Paul Boyer from the school department, Maria de Fatima Maderos Cavaco Andrade from the school department, Robert O'Malley, trustee of the benevolent fund, Paul Robert from the school department, and Victor Remkus, the school department teacher, coach. Thank you. With that, I'd like to call on the chairman of the finance committee, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Naturally, our situation is a little bit weird. We had gone through the process of reviewing all of the departmental budgets when about two months ago, I got an email from Mr. Moses saying basically, "All of our assumptions and everything we thought we understood about the budget was wrong." So we still have a great deal of work to do. We have some amendments to the budget that we're going to present tonight. And we also have a great deal of additional work to do before we resolve everything. And hopefully, we'll be able to resolve a lot of the issues around the fiscal year 2021 budget at our November meeting. But I do want to take a moment to acknowledge all the work that Tom has done. He didn't expect to have to do this. It's been a great deal of additional work for him. He has managed to make appropriate adjustments to the budget in such a way that we were making no layoffs, at least not at the moment. And incidentally, he cut the only salary that -- he cut only one salary, and that was the only salary that he had any discretion over. So I'd like to thank him for his hard work and ask him to forget everything I may have said in the past about Penn. Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Mr. Durant?
Mr. Moderator, I move that where the finance committee recommendation, where there is a recommendation, is the main motion before this meeting.
Does that second it? Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Now, the different rooms, E 101 and F 101. Did it pass? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
The mini theater, yes.
Yes, mini theater and F 101?
Yes, it passes.
Okay. So therefore, the motion is carried and it's the vote of the meeting. So with that said, obviously, these unusual times have been mentioned. And the only thing I can think of is the last 18 words of the Gettysburg Address, "That government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth." And then also, the three most profound words in our language, "we the people." So with that said, we will begin with Article 1. To see if the town will appropriate from free cash $60,916 to police department personnel to fund the fiscal year 2019 and '20 portion of the police union fiscal year 2019 to '21 contract or take any action relative thereto. And under Article 1, the finance committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of this article. Anything to be said on Article 1? If not, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the finance committee's recommendation, please raise -- oh, excuse me. Yes. You wish to speak?
Hi. Mark Terra Salomo, 13 Carter Street, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I'm not sure if you all can hear me in the main auditorium.
Yes.
I just wanted to say on this article, based on the current political situation in our country, I think we should have the chief, Mr. De Perseo, if he can, speak to the disciplinary provisions of this contract. I'd like to know what those provisions are before I vote yes or no on this. And I think that, like any reasonable person, we shouldn't vote yes in a contract that requires us to spend $61,000 without reading the contract or at the very least knowing what's in the contract. Thank you.
This is asking to fund the police union collective bargaining agreement. It is not to approve or disapprove of the contract. Therefore, that question is not within the four corners of this article. Sir, in room F 101?
I -- oh, John Napoleon, 21 Woodland Drive. I'm firmly against this motion as two main roles of the police union are to provide legal defense for officers who engage in misconduct and to engage in collective bargaining to improve the benefits for officers. And neither of these goals are in the aims of the taxpayers or the town as both would increase taxes, and therefore, we shouldn't pay $60,000 to the police union.
Okay, can I -- we have the next speaker there. But before you speak, I have a message from room G 101. It says, "We are experiencing technical difficulties in G 101, and those people have been moved to the cafeteria." So we may make some in-flight adjustments due to that. In room F 101, had you finished speaking? Sir, in room E 101? And -- hold on. Insofar as setting up the cafeteria, can they pull that whatever screen they have down and set up some chairs?
They did do that. There's approximately six voters.
And they still? Is there any more room for them in here? There appears to be, no, some room over there. Sometimes it appears that there is room and there really isn't based on the social distancing mandates. So do we know yet if they can hear?
They can hear. They wanted it a little louder. They did make it a little louder.
Okay. Now, when it comes time to vote, can you take their vote?
We do have a moderator out there.
Oh, you do?
And a runner.
And a runner, okay, good. Sir, in the mini theater? Can you hear?
Oh, yeah. My -- hi. My name is Ricky Gunn. I live at 94 Central Street. I'd also like to know, what does this collective bargaining agreement entail and given current circumstances, both with COVID as well as calls for accountability regarding the police? I'd like to see if possible, we'd be able to table this for a later time until we know the details of the agreement. Thanks.
Mr. Moses, did you discern that question?
I did. The financial arrangement in here, I believe, is 2%. The financial arrangement is 2% in here.
Any other questions on the finance committee's recommendation on Article 1? If not, call for the vote. All those in favor of the finance committee's recommendation? Oh, sir? Do you wish to be recognized, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Could you, for the second time? Do you have a question?
Yes. Again, like I said, what exactly does the collective bargaining agreement consist of before we vote on it?
Mr. Moses, could you give a brief rundown? I'm sure any collective bargaining agreement, CBA, is quite comprehensive, as you can imagine. But could you summarize briefly?
I'll try and respect your ruling on the four corners here. It governs salary, hours of work, discipline, promotion, shifts, splitting between the three different shifts, and overtime provisions, and injured on duty, several other areas.
Do you feel that's it?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Thank you. Fred Lucy, 18 Ridge Road. I move the question.
You want to move the question? Okay. Is that second it?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your right hand. Those opposed, raise your right hand. Yes, and in the other rooms, the negative votes?
Do you want to count?
No, just the negative votes.
Just the negative votes? Okay, can you raise your hands again?
Well, yeah. Give me -- can you give me a count of the yeas and nays?
F 101?
Yes. So we're in the caf. I have negative six for account. G 101 has been moved to the cafeteria because of technical difficulties?
Yes.
So they don't have a microphone? So we don't have a microphone?
Yes, I understand. So you have negative six?
Yes.
People voted against it?
Yes.
Did anybody vote in favor of it?
Two.
Two in favor, six against.
Yes.
This is great.
Raise up high side.
F 101, yes, 22, no, 1. Thank you.
And again, in this audience? Wait a minute. In the audience before me, in the main auditorium. Can I have two tellers up here? Fred? Moderator? Yes, you made a motion to --
Yes, but you haven't explained what the vote requirement is. Most of us believe it's majority.
It's a two-thirds required. Can you take the entire middle here? Yeah. All the way up to the back?
One, one, one?
No, I think we're going to be able to do it with two. Can you take the entire perimeter? You're going to take the entire little section here?
Okay. And you got the outside?
Yeah, all around, including everybody here and all the way up and all the way in the map and all the way down. All those in favor of moving the question, In favor of moving the question, 126 opposed, 23. Therefore, it passes by the necessary two-thirds vote. So now, we will have a vote on the question in particular on Article 1, which is the finance committee's recommendation. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
F 101 has 24 yes votes and seven no votes.
Mini-theater, twenty-three yes, fifteen no.
Therefore, uh, what? Oh, yeah, okay.
So we have eleven yes for no.
Okay. Therefore, it's just a majority vote. Therefore, under Article One, the Finance Committee's recommendation has been passed. It's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article Two, deceive the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $6,000 to the budget of the Lake Boone Commission, set some to be used for invasive weed control to Lake Boone. These funds are Hudson's share of the total weed control cost of weed control on Lake Boone. And under Article Two, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of this article. Anything to be said on Article Two? If not, again, call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. And from the... I don't need to count in room E-101 or F-101. I just have to say, is the predominance yes or no?
Yes, unanimously. Thank you.
I, I, I take that to be yes, and mini-theater. Therefore, the motion is carried at the vote of the, oh, wait a minute.
Okay. Seven yes, three opposed.
Okay, thank you. First time a teller ever got applause at a town meeting. Therefore, the motion is carried at the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article Three, deceive the town vote to appropriate $50,000 from free cash to the sick and vacation buyback account, but taking any action relative thereto. And Article Three, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of this article. However, I now recognize Mr. Clark, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, with a motion to amend, to accomplish something. He'll tell you exactly what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have a motion, excuse me, to pass over this article, Article Three, as well as Article Seven, Article Eight, Article Thirteen, Article Fifteen, Article Sixteen, Article Twenty, Article Twenty-One, Article Twenty-Two, Article Twenty-Six, Article Thirty, Article Thirty-Two, Article Thirty-Six, and Article Thirty-Seven. The intention behind this motion was to streamline this meeting with respect to articles that should not require immediate action and postpone action on them until the November town meeting. This was addressed by the Finance Committee and recommended unanimously by the committee.
Second. Is there anything to be said, the motion? It's technically a motion to amend, and we'll have the main motion as amended. Anything to be said? Excuse me?
Repeat the articles, please, so we can all wind it out.
Yes.
Those are three, seven, eight, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty, twenty-one. I'm sorry?
Sixteen also.
Yes, fifteen, sixteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-six, and thirty-seven.
Okay, and that's been seconded to a motion to amend, who in effect pass over. Anything to be said on that comprehensive motion to pass over? If not, I'll call for, just on the motion to amend, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. And from room, yes or no, on E-101?
Yes, in the mini-theater?
And? F-101, F-101?
F-101, yes. Thank you.
Therefore, the motion to amend... Oh, oh, sorry. You know, when I used to play sports, peripheral vision was not in my vocabulary. I mean, I'd just run right down, and I got knocked over all, ten times out of ten. Excuse me, go ahead.
Yes, from the caf.
Okay. Therefore, it is passed. The motion to amend, now we'll take a motion, the main motion has just been amended. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. So carries in the main auditorium, E-101?
F-101, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And E...
Vote yes or no, yes? Mini-theater, yes?
Okay. And?
Cafeteria, yes.
Yes. Therefore, the motion as amended to pass over three, seven, eight, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-six, and thirty-seven has passed the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article Four, deceive the town vote the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter Forty-One of the Messages General Laws, as amended and raise and appropriate a sum of money, therefore, to provide funds needed to defray the usual and necessary expenses of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2020, and ending on June 30, 2021, and raise and appropriate the money needed to carry into effect the provisions of this article, but take any action relative thereto. And then, at this time, I want to call on Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have another motion to amend. And the motion to amend would be to substitute the original recommendation with the revised recommendations, or the revised budget recommendations included as an insert in the printed warrant. The committee reviewed this recommendation, and we have recommended, well, recommended the substance of the revised budget unanimously.
Okay. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Excuse me? Yes. This is just to, in effect, change the Finance Committee's recommendation, what's been published, to what they acted upon, I believe, last Tuesday, in accordance with the proposals by the executive assistant in the process of reformulating the entire budget for fiscal year 2021. So we'll just take a, a vote that we're going to substitute what's in the hand warrant for what is in the handout. And then, we're going to go through what's in the handout by the traditional way of segment by segment, grouping of different line items, and take a vote from there on. It's a little bit complicated, but this is the way we have to do it. Yes. Yes. All we're doing is saying that instead of taking the Finance Committee's recommendation from the published hand warrant, we are substituting the, uh, the handout insert as the first motion before you, as the Finance Committee's recommendation. Do we all understand? Am I totally confused? Is there anybody? I have not confused. Let's do it by, okay, I guess. So, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's new recommendations, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Okay, the main auditorium votes, yes. Mini-theater?
Mini-theater?
Mini-theater, yes?
F-101?
F-101, yes. Thank you.
And?
Yes.
Yes, or yeses. Therefore, the motion to amend has passed. Now, as we do previous years, we will take the budget, department by department, and if you want to set aside any question, anything, we will do it at that time. For the large groupings, what we will do, we'll set aside, vote on the remaining ones that are not set aside, and then return to the specifically line items that anybody wishes to have set aside. It's what we do every year. So the first grouping is Board of Selectmen, line items one and two. Either of those two? If not, call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's new recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini-theater? I...
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
F-101?
F-101, yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, the Finance Committee's recommendation is approved. It's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Lyra Adams, three through twelve, executive assistants, any of those that anybody wishes to set aside? If not, call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance, oh, yes.
Okay, couple of questions.
Okay, where? Yes, definitely. Yeah. Is it a general question, or do you want one particular one set aside?
Yeah, well, no, I want to ask a question about one of the lines.
Uh, which one?
The legal services.
Okay. So why don't we set aside line item nine? Is there any other line items under the executive assistants that we want set aside? If not, I'll take a vote on line items... Okay, they're all sound in the cafeteria. Yeah, there are hopefully additional seats in room F-101. Can I ask their indulgent that we can go on?
I think they're on.
Oh, they're on again? Somebody's waving to me. I think it's my brother-in-law. Okay, is, uh, any, are there any other ones, sir, in the mini-theater? Excuse me?
Line item, uh, three.
Cafeteria still does not have sound? Are there still six of them, or more than that?
God bless you so much.
I've never done this before.
Honey, no one's got any...
They're on, okay. Um, are there any others, other than line item number nine, legal services, that anybody wants set aside?
Any?
If not...
He heard you. I think he's dealing with the other lady.
Okay.
No, go ahead, you're on now.
Oh.
So do you want line items set aside?
Oh, yes, I wanted to set aside line items three and line item five.
Okay. So that leaves us with four, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve. Anything to be said on those remaining line items? If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's new recommendation under those specific line items, except for three, five, and nine? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini-theater? Yes?
Yes.
101? F-101? F-101?
F-101, yes. Thank you.
Cafeteria has a mic? Okay. Does cafeteria, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, the motion is carried, the vote of the Finance Committee under those particular line items have been approved, and it's the vote of the meeting, I so declare it. Now we return to the ones that were set aside, specifically, legal services. Ma'am?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Beth Langlois, Five Appleton Drive. I just wanted to, I know that the Finance Committee had voted to reduce the budget by two percent across the board for all departments, so I'm wondering why the legal services amount went up by so much? If maybe someone could speak to that?
Yeah, Mr. Moses?
Yeah, that is the cost of the ongoing litigation that we have regarding PFAS and the water system.
Okay. Anything else to be said on line item number nine? Again, we're acting on the Finance Committee's recommendation. If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation under line item nine? All those opposed, please raise your right hand. The vote of the mini-theater? I didn't hear you. Can you say it again?
Yes.
Yes. F-101?
F-101, yes. Thank you.
And cafeteria?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, the motion is carried, the Finance Committee's recommendation, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. The next ones that we set, asked to be set aside were line item three, executive assistant, and line item five, election in town meeting. Sir, do you want to speak on, or question?
Of course, thank you so much. So, in regards to line item three, I see an increase between fiscal year 20 and 21 of about $10,000 for personnel, and I kind of wanted to know why. Number three, uh...
Are you, sir?
But if you look at the revised...
Sir, we're working on the...
20 to 21.
We're working on the insert, not on the hand warrant.
Still, though, it's FY budget for 20 was $311,000, 152, while the Finance Committee's recommendation is $322,089.
Mr. Moses, do you have a quick answer for that?
Yeah, those are reflective of the non-reunion cost of living increases and personal service contract.
Okay, sir. So...
Oh, sir.
And then you want, um, line item number five held aside?
I noticed that from F fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 21, there's a large increase in spending, $8,000, then $31,000, then $22,000 with the, this year revised, $33,000. I want to know why there was an $11,000 increase despite the fact that 2021 has no federal elections?
Mr. Moses?
It has, has to do with the number of elections, both primary and, and main elections, as well as local elections.
Okay. I think I can, do you have any other questions, sir?
There are fewer elections in next year?
Yeah.
So it's fiscal year?
It's, yeah. It's July 1st to June 30th is the year. It's July 1st to June 30th is the year.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, I'll call for the vote on both of them. Again, we're acting on the new FinCom recommendations under both line item three and line item five. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Cafeteria?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare Line items 13 and 14, the Finance Committee's recommendation, either of those two? If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes?
Room 101, F-101?
Yes, thank you.
Cafeteria?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Just a little FYI, there's like a one-second delay from when I asked them for the vote and what appears on the screen, so they're not, you know, taking time off or anything like that. End of the hour will dock their pay. Line items 15 and 16, Town Clerk, Registrar, either of those two? If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Cafeteria?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Line items 17 through 31, any of those that anybody wished set aside? If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say... Raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
F-101?
Yes.
Cafeteria?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare Line items 32 and 33, please depart. Either of those two? Sir, do you want to set aside either one of those two? In room...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to set aside both of these line items, please.
Both of them?
Yes, please.
Okay. Both of them have been set aside. Would you want to speak on line item 32 first?
Yes, and I can... If you allow it, I'll make a general... Both line items.
Excuse me?
Name and address, please.
If you allow it, I'll make a comment on both line items.
Can you give your name and address?
13 Carter Street.
And your name is?
Mark Teja Salumau. Mr. Moderator, I'd like, given the fact that on the first article, various people came to town meeting, voted yes, and then left, and also given the earlier comments I made about Article One, I make a motion for us to amend these line items and make a 10% reduction in both line items. Thank you.
Do you have a specific amount as opposed to 10%?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
You don't have sound or video.
In the cafeteria? They neither have audio nor video in the cafeteria.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. To people in the cafeteria, there's additional space in the mini theater in room F-101. And we'll wait one, two, three seconds while you get there. The assistant moderators, can you see when the people are coming in? Room F-101 is down the hallway some. The assistant moderators, are the people in the rooms?
Yes, there's peoples coming in.
Yeah, but they already in?
Into a different room.
Okay.
F-101 currently has about 10 seats available.
Oh, good. For anybody who's interested, room F-101 has 10 additional seats available. So, sir, sir there, could you... You made a motion to reduce it by 10%, but I require a specific dollar amount.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. For line item 32, to reduce by $447,399 to an even $3 million. And then on line item 33...
We're just going to do one at a time. Excuse me. Excuse me. We're just going to do one at a time.
Okay.
Okay. So, you want to make a motion to amend the Finance Committee's recommendation to lower the police department personnel to $3 million even? Is that correct? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that seconded? Somebody seconded?
Somebody seconded.
Okay. Could you speak on your motion, sir?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Just to reiterate what I said earlier, and also what I stated earlier regarding Article One, many people came to vote yes on Article One, and then left immediately after. It seems that in your determination, that quorum remained. In light of not knowing what's in the police contract for the police union, and given the fact that Hudson is a relatively safe community with relatively low crimes of any kind, especially violent crimes, I would like to make this motion to reduce the budget, especially given the budgetary financial constraints we are going to face as a town in the preceding financial fiscal years. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else to be said on that?
Julia Wilkinson, Woodrow Street. I would just like to point out that this budget that is being requested, the $3,483,799... I'm sorry, $399, that that amount is already approximately $400,000 less than what is originally in the budget request. So, we are already talking about a police system that is being asked to work on $400,000 less than what they are really needing, and you're now requesting an additional cut of another $400,000. I'd like you to just think about that when we're thinking about these numbers and what we're really requesting here. It's more than just what you see on this piece of paper. It's a deeper cut than that because these numbers were what was originally requested and needed. Thank you.
Anything else to be said on the motion to amend to $3 million even? Ma'am? In the mini theater?
Mini Theater?
Yeah, mini theater, this is Sandy Bouchard, 18 Overland Street. I think I want to make a small math correction on the previous speaker. The new recommendations were only $1,000 less than the original, not 400,000. Just wanted to say that.
Okay. Anything else to be said on the motion to amend? That's all we're discussing at this moment. If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend, to amend, to reduce it to $3 million even, raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Yes? I'm sorry, majority no.
Okay. And room 101?
F-101, majority no.
And we... And there's no longer any cafeteria?
No, they're in the F room.
They're in the F room. F-101 room. Therefore, the motion is defeated. So, before you, we now have the Finance Committee's recommendation, which is that $3,447,399 amount. Anything to be said on that motion? If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Do you want to count, or do I swallow majority?
No, just if it's yes or no.
Yes or no.
If it's too close.
Too close.
It's too close? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. In room 101?
F-101, yes. Majority?
Yes. Mini Theater, again, since it's too close to declare, why don't you take account of
It's a yes. It's 21 yes, 10 no.
Okay. Therefore, the motion, Finance Committee's recommendation, the motion carries, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it.[1442.33][1442.33](APPLAUSE). Now, we go to the other line item that was requested, we set aside, line item 33, police department expenses. Sir, you asked it be held aside? Each time, could you state your name and address? Because people here...
Yes, Mr. Mo.
...can't see you.
13 Carter Street. My rationale in making this motion was the same as the previous, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay. But the motion we have before you is that Finance Committee's recommendation of $322,921.
Sure. In that case, I choose not to make a motion to amend. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Room F-101? Oh, mini theater?
F-101, the speaker.
Steve Manard, 111 Brigham Street. This had a question on the expenses. How much of those expenses are going towards any type of military equipment or other type of non-lethal means like other things that we've seen, like, say, tasers, or rubber bullets, or tear gas, or anything like that? Is that stuff in the budget, or does that not exist in the town of Hudson? Thank you.
Well, I called for the vote, but because of the time wagon, time delay, you know, did give the person the opportunity to go to the microphone. Unfortunately, I don't know, did you... Mr. Moses, did you discern that question?
I did. There's a small amount for equipment. It isn't necessarily delineated by type. I know there's a few thousand dollars for ammunition required for firearm training, and there is usually a line item for a couple of thousand dollars for additional equipment that may need to be replaced during any fiscal year.
So, once again, if there's nobody at the microphone, any of the microphones, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation under line item 33, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Theater?
We have another speaker.
Another speaker.
Okay. Okay. Okay, sir?
Hi, Ricky Gallin, 94 Central Street in Hudson. I just wanted to see if it be possible to pass a motion or anything restricting the use of expenses to certain... To non-lethal, non-military-grade weapons and ammunition. Thanks.
Is that a comment?
Is that a comment?
Yeah.
Is any other...
Motion to amend.
What do you want to amend it to?
I'd like to make a stipulation that expenses not be used for any military-grade weapons or ammunition.
It's a line item, it has to be in an amount.
It has to be in an amount.
It has to be in an amount.
That's not a valid motion.
Valid motion.
I don't think you can do that. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Mr. Lucy, people are in the background. They have to come up. I can only see a small picture. I can't see them like I can see you. There is a little bit of getting used to this format, and we're going to have to tolerate it. Either that, or we have no town meeting. So, if there's nobody standing at the microphone, I will now call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater, how did you vote?
Yes.
Room F-101, how did you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Therefore, the motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Line items 34 and 35, Fire Department, either of those two, we're working out the Finance Committee's recommendation. If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation under 34 and 35, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater, how did you vote?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Line items 36 and 37, Inspection Department, either of those two, that anybody has any questions. If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini theater, how do you vote?
Yes.
Room F-101, how did you vote?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Line items 38 through 41, DPW, any of those four are line items. If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini theater, how do you vote? Mini theater?
Yes.
And room F-101?
Yes.
The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Board of Health, line items 42 and 43, either of those two, that anybody wants to set aside a question? If not, again, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini theater, how did you vote?
Yes.
Room F-101, how did you vote?
Yes.
The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Council on Aging, 44 and 45, anything to be said on those two line items? Again, if not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini theater, how do you vote?
Yes.
Room F-101, how do you vote?
Yes.
The motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Line items 46 and 47, Veteran Service, either of those two. Again, if not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini theater, how do you vote?
Yes.
Room F-101, how do you vote?
Yes.
The motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. 48 and 49, Laboratory, either of those two. Again, if not, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini theater? Room F-101?
Yes.
The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Line items 50 and 51, either of those two. If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. The motion is carried, it's the vote, oh, excuse me. Mini theater, how do you vote?
Yes.
Room F-101, how do you vote?
Yes.
The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Debt Service, line item 52, anything to be said on that? Anybody want us not to pay our debt? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini theater, how do you vote?
Yes.
Room F-101, how do you vote?
Yes.
The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Pensions, line item 53, anything to be said on that? Again, if not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Oh, don't, excuse me. Got ahead of myself. Mini theater?
Yes.
Yes. Room F-101?
Yes.
Old habits die hard. Line item 53 is the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. 54 and 55, Insurance, either of those two. If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. The most, mini theater?
Yes.
Room F-101? The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. 56 and 57, Assabett Valley, either of those two. If not, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Schools, line items 58 and 59, either of those two. Yep. Can you come to the microphone to make the amendment? And there's somebody in the mini theater who wants to speak.
Beth Langloy, 5 Appleton Drive. I'd like to make an amendment that we vote on the original amount that the Finance Committee had chosen.
The, and that?
Before the 2% reduction.
And that amount is? You mean under both line items 57 and 58?
Yes.
But we do only one line item at a time. We don't aggregate them.
So 58?
We can vote in the aggregate, but we have to vote separately on each one. Totals are not technically part of the town warrant.
Okay. So line 58, the amount of $32,136,08?
Okay. Does that second it?
Seconded it.
Okay. Would you like to discuss that?
Yes, I would like to say that I understand we're going to be in, you know, a great deal of struggle here ahead of us with the, with COVID and the economic fallout. I understand our town is going to go through a lot of difficulties, just like every town. I feel that the schools already are on tight budgets to begin with. They are going to be faced with an enormous amount of challenges, finding new ways to educate their students. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. The technology expenses, if they're in the schools, the amount increased to clean the schools and keep them sanitized and find ways to space out the children, it's going to have a great impact. It's, teachers can't even keep the classrooms perfectly clean on a normal year. They ask parents to donate wipes and cleaning supplies. I just think there's going to be an enormous challenge, and I think, you know, educating K through 12 for a town of 20,000 people, I think we deserve to keep the budget at least at the way it was to try and face this challenge.
Okay. Anything else to be said on the motion to amend? Well, first, we have this in the mini theater. Did you wish to speak?
Shawna Weston, 25 Cortland Drive. I want to support the amendment. I echo everything the previous speaker just said. In addition, we're going to be asking our schools to have PPE like this and extra cleaning supplies, and in theory, having students spaced out in a way that requires a lot more space, having students spaced out on transportation in a way that's going to increase costs. And we already, last year, had circumstances where there weren't funds for our libraries to have new books, for our PE teachers to have new equipment. So we really need to keep the budget where it is. It already hasn't been adequate. And the idea of a 2% cut with what our students are facing, with the special education needs, with the increased social, emotional needs for our students after this time, is really unconscionable.
Mr. Moderator, Glenn Maston, 2 Collins Drive. I'm also the chair of the school committee. I'd just like to say that the school department has realized a significant amount of savings in this year's budget due to the fact that schools were closed, significantly more than the 2% that we are facing the cut with tonight. We should not have to deal with making any significant cuts to our services or to our personnel for next year as a result of this 2% reduction. And as far as PPE and other equipment that are needed for next year, for possibly making adjustments to open schools under unusual circumstances, we have approximately $250,000 coming from the CARES Act that we will be voting to accept at our school committee meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Sherman Kevro Koffler, live up on Hedgesings Road in Westridge. And I'd be very interested in hearing the Finance Committee's analysis that resulted in their having made the recommendation that they made. Why did they, what was the reason, what were their reasons for making that recommendation?
Mr. Clark?
Well, honestly, at this time, we don't know what the budget, what the, what the schools need for funding is going to be next year. At this point, the variables are too broad and really too extreme to really make any kind of accurate projections, not only with respect to the school budget, but really with respect to pretty much any of the departmental budgets. And at this time, we're really taking a kind of wait-and-see approach. So the amended budget probably is not going to be final. It may be with respect to certain departments, but we're still waiting to determine what's going to happen.
Boy, am I confused. Are we, I think, when we, when we vote tonight, we are voting vis-à-vis a number, the number that's printed here. And that, I understand, and you'll correct me of course if I'm wrong.
Through the moderator, to the audience, not to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Clark himself. He may respond to that, but the format is, questions are asked through the moderator to the audience.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, to the, yes.
Mr. Moderator, as I indicated, I'm a bit confused, Mr. Moderator. I thought we were voting vis-à-vis a number that is on the paper, yes or no? And now I hear an explanation from the Finance Committee that says they're not real sure what the budget would be, and that this would be subject to a change as time passes and more information is known. Is that what I just heard, Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Moses?
Yeah, maybe I can explain. Usually, by this date, we have a state budget. Approximately 15% to 20% of our budget is relying on state aid. We will not see a state budget until September. So right now, we are voting, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen took votes based on the best information they have at this time. That, those, these numbers that we're voting tonight may need to either be decreased or increased in November.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep. I think, did you, do you have a follow-up question specifically?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, go ahead.
So my, my, what I'm hearing, I think, is that the best information we have at this time, the amount of money that is associated with the total budget that this town can afford in the view of the Finance Committee, what I heard, Mr. Moderator, is the number that is printed, and that is subject to change and probably will change based upon the November town meeting. That having been the case, and given the magnitude of the number we're looking at, I think it'd be prudent to go with the Finance Committee's conservative approach and wait until we know more and we find out more about what the state is giving us before we make the final decision in November, Mr. Moderator, sir.
Okay. Mr. Lucy?
I'll pass for now, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
And Mr. Durant?
I'll pass for now, Wilson.
Okay. So we, anything else to be said on the motion to amend?
Mr. Moderator, I can't make it to the mic, but I'd like to point out, point of order.
Okay.
The line items that you have for the Hudson High School in the, this, the sheet are different than the numbers that are on the original documentation.
Yes, they are different.
They are 57 and, they are 58 and 59, and the original one is 57 and 58. We have to check which ones we're voting on.
Well, right now, the motion on the handout is, where the heck did that go? Is that line item 58, which has been motioned, moved to amend to that $32,13,608. Is that correct? Does that answer your question? Okay, Mr. Lucy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The error occurred in the original printing. Assabett had one number. It should have been 56 and 57. It was corrected in the pass out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to be said about, before you, the motion to amend, to amend the amount on the school committee to $32,13,608? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Mini theater? Room 101?
Room 101?
Yes.
Okay.
They're saying yes to the motion to amend to increase the amount of the FinCom's recommendation to $32,13,32,013,008, since it appeared that majority in the auditorium voted no, and they said yes to the people. We will now take a standing tell it count. Could I have my two?
Tellers up here? Okay, you know where you, you've already been sworn in, you know where you're going to be going. In mini theater, in room F-101, we are going to now take a standing tell it count. So could you please count each voter as they stand? And I will now call for the vote of all in favor of the motion to amend to the $32,13, $32,013,08 amount. Mini theater, do you have a count?
16, yes. No, 11.
No, you're not, no. We haven't taken the no vote yet. We haven't taken the no vote yet.
No vote, yeah.
So, 16, yes?
16, yes.
And room F-101?
There are 12 yes votes.
Okay, good. Now, those opposed to the motion to amend, please stand and remain standing until your Mini Theater?
No, 11.
And F-101?
Three no votes.
In favor of the motion to amend is 42, against the motion to amend is 84, therefore, the motion to amend is defeated. So now we have the original amended finance committee's recommendation before you that's in the handout. Is there anything further to be said on that? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the finance committee's recommendation under that particular line item, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater? Room F-101?
F-101 votes no.
No? So, room F-101 is no. This audience is yes, and Mini Theater is yes. Well, I think I'll declare the vote. The vote is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. So that is, leads us to the next line item, which is school department expenses. Is there anything to be said under the new finance committee's recommendation? If not, I'll call for the vote. Under the line item, the new line item, 59, as somebody pointed out, they don't exactly match up, but it is with the handouts, the new line item, number 59. All those in favor of the finance committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, the motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. School transportation, line item in the handout, the new handout is 60. Anything to be said on that? If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater, oh, wait a minute, were you standing at the microphone, sir?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
This is James Martin from 61 Lincoln Street. I have a question about the proposal. The school transportation budget has been, is relatively flat in these, in the recommendation, and we are talking about making reductions. With the reduction in travel this year, does that, the reduction in travel does not seem to be reflected and diverted towards the operational budget of the school.
I believe school travel and school transportation are two separate items. Is that correct? Mr. Moses?
I'm not sure what the question means by school travel.
Transportation, sir, transportation.
There's some savings this year. I don't want to speak for the school committee, but I know that they are saving some money this year, and it's likely that expenses will go up next year with regard to precautions about social distancing as they start the year, but superintendent's walking down. Here comes the superintendent.
The savings associated with this year's halt in transportation, well, we save to offset some of the, the costs that we are losing, the 2% cut. So, it's to offset some of the expenses for next year.
Clarification.
Okay. Anybody else standing at the microphone? If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the finance committee's new recommendation, please raise your right All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater? Room F-101?
Yes.
The motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $163,512 to hire three new water department staff to meet the Department of Environmental Protection staffing requirements due to the addition of new treatment facilities or take any action relative thereto. And under Article 6, the finance committee recommends the adoption of the subject matter.
Skip five.
Did we? I bypassed. How in the world did I do that? No. Can I plead foggy glasses? No. Don't let them. Okay. I guess you want to have a capital plan, or at least have a vote. Article 5, thanks for catching that. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $349,559 and appropriate from free cash $1,776,687 to purchase items of equipment and make capital improvements requested by the various departments or take any other action relative thereto. And in your hand warrant, you have seven different departments, public works, fire department, community development, information technology, police department, recreation department, and school department, all listed as a request, and I will dispense with the reading of each and every one of those. And under Article 5, the finance committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter. Is anything to be said under Article 5? We, if you have somebody who wants to speak. Sir, you want to speak? Again, each time to speak in your, as far as they're concerned, you're off, they can't see you, so can you state your name and address?
Yes, Mark Terra Salomo, 13 Carter Street. The town meeting will forgive me for seeming like a broken record, but I'd like to amend, make a motion to amend this article to remove the line items, police cruisers two, $114,430, and police cruisers one from cannabis, $57,215.
Okay, is that seconded? So you want to eliminate the $114,430 and the $57,215?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Is that seconded? That's seconded. Do you want to, do you want to speak on your motion?
Yes. Most of us probably here own a vehicle, and it's a necessary part of our work and our lives. However, when we need work on the vehicle, we go, we get it fixed, we get oil changes, et cetera, et cetera. Most of us don't have the means to continuously purchase new vehicles every three years or even more frequently, given the fact, once again, that the town is under financial duress and may be under worse financial duress in the future, and given the fact that we have very new police cruisers in this town, including a pickup police cruiser, which I can't possibly imagine what you're doing with that, I'd like to, this is why I'm making the motion, to remove these two line items from the article. Thank you.
Okay. That's already been moved and seconded. Sir, you want to speak on that motion to amend?
Mr. Moderator, no, I don't. I had a, I wanted to speak to the, the total capital plan, and I have just a generic question.
First, we have before us a motion to amend...
Okay.
...that is in effect to eliminate, under police, two police cruisers and one police cruiser for those amounts so mentioned. Is, you want to speak on that? Go ahead, ma'am, go ahead.
No, no, Mr. Moderator, I'll wait until...
Yes, and a woman right there wishes to speak on the particular motion to amend.
Hi, Jessica Pereira, 17, with Allen Road. I agree with the previous speaker, it just doesn't seem like it's that necessary. We have new police cruisers on the force, and unless they're completely beyond repair, I just don't see justifying purchasing three brand-new ones.
Is there anything else to be said on the motion to amend? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of that motion to amend, please raise your right hand. Oh, yes. The motion is on the capital plan under the police department to delete, remove police cruisers two for $114,430 and police cruisers, cruiser one for $57,215. Okay? So, again, seeing nobody at the microphone, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of that motion to amend, to delete those, please raise your right All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Majority no.
Room, F-101?
F-101, majority yes.
Majority yes? Well, we have a split vote. Can I have my tellers up here? Now, we're going to vote, all those in favor of that motion to amend by eliminating the police cruisers two and police cruisers one, to vote, to eliminate them by voting yes, please stand and remain standing until your vote is counted.
10 yes.
F-101?
10 votes yes.
All those opposed to the motion to eliminate the three police cruisers, please stand and remain standing until your vote is counted.
What was it again? 16 no. 16 no.
Room F-101? The vote on the motion to amend is 28 yes, 96 no, therefore, the motion to amend is defeated. So now we have, again, before you, the entire capital budget. Is there anything to be said, sir?
Mr. Moderator, this, I'm Herman Kavalkoff, on Hastings Road, and I would like to have someone who has the knowledge to please tell us how much we have as a balance that's eligible to be spent in free cash.
Mr. Moses?
It's approximately $4 million right now. Approximately $4 million.
If I heard right, it's approximately $4 million? Thank you.
Okay.
So, we're, we're just spending a tad less than 50% of it, just for this one article.
Sir, in room 101?
Mr. Moderator, this is James Martin, 61 Lincoln Street. One, one commentary. Please repeat the questions from the other rooms. We are not able to hear all the questions being discussed in the other rooms. Second matter is, is there any funds, whether it's free cash or cannabis, that is set to expire if it's not allocated?
Mr. Moses, did you discern that question? I don't think they heard you.
The answer to that is no. It's a little more complicated with free cash because free cash in a normal year goes away on June 30th and awaits recertification. Usually for us, it's sometime after January 1st. However, given the state of the Commonwealth's budget, it is likely that the unspent free cash will be held over to be utilized in the fall town meeting.
Did you hear that?
I did hear that question, sir. My follow-up is, is there any reprioritization that may happen between now and November based on the, the possible expiration of funds?
Yes, that's possible.
Thank you, sir.
In the Mini Theater, sir? Sir, can you hear?
I just have a question regarding how much in funding the town has from cannabis. I have noticed we are spending, are getting funding from cannabis, but I haven't seen a total...
from cannabis, but I haven't seen a total from how much the town has received from cannabis taxation. Thank you.
Mr. Moses?
That figure is going to be unknown, probably, until the fall. As you know, the Commonwealth had suspended adult-use cannabis sales that affected our is affecting our collections right now. Even though cannabis sales have resumed, the Commonwealth has exempted the cannabis retailers from turning that money into them and then from it, from the Commonwealth, coming back to us. So, we have no idea how much we're actually going to get for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay. Anything else to be said on the entire Finance Committee's recommendation on the capital plan? If not, again, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. And from the Mini Theater?
Yes.
In room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. It's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $163,512 to hire three water department staff to meet Department of Environmental Protection staffing requirements due to the addition of new treatment facilities or take any action relative thereto. And under Article six, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of the subject matter of this article. Is there anything to be said on Article six and the Finance Committee's recommendation? If not, again, I'll call for the vote on the Finance Committee's recommendation. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, the motion is carried and the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article one, Article seven, excuse me. As at the beginning of Article three, we passed over a number of articles, and Article seven is one of the ones that has been passed over by a previous vote. Article eight has been passed over by a previous vote. Article nine is to see if the town will vote to borrow and appropriate pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8, Clause 7, 8, as amended in any other enabling authority the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of repair and replacement of various water treatment plant equipment. And if there are no objections, I'll dispense with a further reading of that article. And under Article nine, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of this article. It requires borrowing, it's a two-thirds vote. You may make it unanimous if you wish. Anything to be said on Article nine? All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater, can you report on negative votes?
Zero.
Zero? Room F-101, negative votes?
Zero negative votes.
Okay. And there were no negative votes in this hall? Therefore, the motion is carried. It's carried unanimously. It's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to transfer the excess bond proceeds of $237,820.79 from the $1.3 million borrowing authorized under Article six, May 2016, for the Manning Street Sewer Replacement Project to the wastewater treatment Phase II project per Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, or take any action relative thereto. And under Article 10, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of the article. Anything to be said on Article 10? If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to borrow and appropriate pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Clause 1 and 7, as amended, and any other enabling authority the sum of $14,762,179.21 for the purposes of engineering services, replacement, rehabilitation, and installation of various equipment and facility upgrades within the wastewater treatment and pump station. And if there are no objections, I'll dispense with a further reading of that article. And under Article 11, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of the article. This is borrowing, requires a two-thirds vote. You may make it unanimous if you wish. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater, did you have any negative votes?
No, we didn't have any.
Room 101, did you have any negative votes?
No, zero.
Therefore, the motion is carried. It's carried unanimously. It's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to borrow and appropriate pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Clause 1, as amended, or any other enabling authority the sum of $1,282,981 for the purpose of replacing the public safety radio system and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue any bonds and notes necessary thereto. And again, if there are no objections, I'll dispense with a further reading of that article. And under Article 12, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of the article. Again, this requires borrowing. It requires a two-thirds vote. Again, you can make it unanimous if you wish. All those, anything to be said on Article 12? Again, if not, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater, any negative votes?
No.
Room 101, any negative votes?
No.
Therefore, the motion is carried. It's carried unanimously. It's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 13, I believe, has already been passed over. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to borrow and appropriate pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Clause 1 and 7, as amended, or any other enabling authority the sum of $185,000 for the purposes of making roof repairs at the Hudson High School. And again, if there are no objections, I won't read the rest of the article. And under Article 14, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of the subject matter of the article. And again, it's borrowing, requires two-thirds vote. Anything to be said on Article 14? Ma'am?
This is Susie King from 10 John Robinson Drive in Hudson. I'm wondering if someone could give me some information here about this roof repair. This is not such an old building, again, once again, that we're talking about major expenses. Do we go back to the builder for any of this? Since I've lived in Hudson, we've had two new high schools, which has a lot to do with the roof problem. And I just wonder if there's more, some information about that as to why we're looking at such a huge amount of money, again, for roof repairs.
And can anybody answer that question quickly? There comes the Superintendent of Schools. Fortunately, he's not carrying his umbrella.
Hudson High School is over 15 years old now. It's the wear and tear of years of weather. It's just some repairs that we have to do throughout the building to avoid, you know, major damage to classrooms because of the, you know, the condition of the roof right now.
Good. Any other questions or comments under Article 14?
Mr. Moderator? Mark Teresamo, 13 Carr Street. To the previous person's question and to the Superintendent's response, I also wanted to add, I am a licensed architect in Como, Massachusetts. And as Mr. Rodriguez said, the building is at least 15 years old. That is within the normal life of the kind of flat roof system we have in this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to be said or any other comments? This is borrowing, requires two-thirds vote. Again, you may make it unanimous if you wish. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater, any negative votes?
No.
Room F-101, any negative votes?
No.
Therefore, the motion is carried. It's carried unanimously. It's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 15, I believe, was passed over at the time of Article three. Article 16 was passed over. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the following expenditures from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, F in a three-quarters. And I'll dispense with a further reading of that article. But I believe Mr. Moses has an amendment.
Yeah, I would like to propose an amendment. It's not going to change the total dollar amount of the entire article, but it does change the detail. The amount under Town Internet Networking, INET salaries would go from $148,170 to $158,170, an increase of $10,000. And INET operational expenses would go from $100,000 to $90,000, a decrease of $10,000. And I so move.
That seconded? So, all it is, a simple changing of the numbers. It's a motion to amend. Anything to be said on the motion to amend? If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor of that motion to amend, please raise your right hand. All those opposed to the motion to amend? Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Okay, now we have the main motion. It's just been amended by just changing those numbers. We, the motion to amend is not the final vote. Now we have to have the final vote. All those in favor of the final vote, please raise-- okay, somebody has a question? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Beth Langley, 5 Appleton Drive. I was curious to know, maybe Mr. Moses could speak to it through the moderator, if this will involve any improvements in, you know, audio and visual. Obviously, we're living in a virtual world right now, and it is often difficult to hear Board of Selectmen meetings and sometimes school committee meetings, seeing certain visuals. So I wonder if there's any improvements involved here.
I know that the technical staff in HUD TV is constantly working at trying to improve this. Each year, there's a small amount set aside to address some of those issues. It's no different this year than previous years.
Okay. Anything else to be said on the main motion? It's just amended. If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion as amended, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. It's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer $100,000 to the Unemployment Compensation Trust Fund to provide for the anticipated costs of funding reimbursements to the Commonwealth for unemployment compensation benefits and administration in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5E, or take any action relative thereto. And under Article 18, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of the article. Anything to be said on that? If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. On Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer $450,000 to the Workers' Compensation Insurance Trust Fund for the purpose of paying insurance and liability to pay workers' compensation or take any action relative thereto. And under Article 19, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter. Anything to be said in the Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 19? Again, if not, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 20 has been passed over by a previous vote. Article 21 has been voted, passed over, by a previous vote. Article 22 has been voted to pass over by a previous vote. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to adopt a reserve fund to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures or transfers to be made by the departments only by vote of the Finance Committee. And if there are no objections, I won't read the rest of the article. And under Article 23, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of the subject matter of the article. Anything to be said on that? Again, if not, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve fund the Community Preservation Annual Revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administration expenses and other expenses in fiscal year 2021, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriation from FY 2021, estimated revenues for committee administration expenses, And from reserves, there are four estimated revenue sources for a total of $575,923.25. And under Article 24, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of this subject matter. Anything to be said on Article 24? Again, if not, a call for the vote on the Finance Committee's recommendation. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation of available funds the following, and I'll dispense with the reading of that part, seven thousand dollars from undesignated fund balances and four thousand dollars from Hudson Preservation Reserve, or taking any action relative thereto. And under Article twenty-five, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of this subject matter. Anything to be said on that? If not, again, call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article twenty-six has been passed over by a previous vote. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, six, five hundred and twelve dollars, said sum to be utilized to offset the cost of operating and maintaining a joint police and fire dispatch system through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. And I'll dispense with a further reading of that article. And under Article twenty-seven, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of this subject matter. Anything to be said under Article twenty-one? Again, if not, it's a majority call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to amend Section two, subsection five of Article three of the general bylaws of the town by adding a new authorized revolving fund for use by certain town department boards, committees, agencies, or offices under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, or take any action relative thereto. To amend the general bylaws of the town of Hudson by adding to Article three, Section two, subsection five, the following authorized revolving fund, and it's in your hand warrant specifically what they wish to amend by adding. And under Article twenty-eight, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of this subject matter. Anything to be said on Article twenty-eight? Again, if not, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to fix the maximum amount that they may spend during fiscal year 2021, beginning on July first, 2020, for the revolving funds established by the town. And again, I'll dispense with the reading of the, further reading of the grid in the articles. There are eleven such revolving funds, and under Article twenty-nine, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of this subject matter. Anything to be said under Article twenty-nine? Does anyone want to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Jessica Pereira, seventeen, with Allen Road. It just seems a little weird that it's the same amount of maximum spending for school department professional development as the farmer's market. I would like to pass a motion to amend to increase the school department professional development maximum spending by ten thousand dollars to thirty thousand.
Well, there's a general rule that you can't increase an amount that's published in the warrant. The thought is nice, but it has to stay, I believe, at the twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, can I ask why that happens to be the same amount as the farmer's market while the school department professional development helps students learn and increases teacher skill?
Anybody, Mister Moses or the superintendent have the answer to that quickly?
This is not only, the only money that the school uses for professional development. A revolving fund is, is so they collect money off budget and spend that money. In addition, they appropriate money to train their teachers for professional development.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else to be said on the Finance Committee's recommendation, which is to recommend the subject matter of the article? Again, if not, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article thirty, I believe, was passed over by that previous vote. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate eighty thousand dollars from the receipts reserved for appropriation from the sale of cemetery lots in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one fifteen, Section fifteen, for the phase one repair and replacement of the Forest Avenue Cemetery wall, Forest Veil Cemetery Wall, or take any action relative thereto. And under Article twenty-three-one, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the adoption of this subject matter. Anything to be said on that? If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. I believe Article thirty-two was passed over by a previous vote. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will appropriate the receipts of the Light and Power Department, and again, this is a standard article, and I will dispense with the reading of the article. And under Article thirty-three, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of this subject matter. Anything to be said under Article thirty-three? Again, if not... You wish to speak? No. Oh, okay, sorry. It's okay.
Just ignore me.
You picked a good time for my glasses to fog up. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation under Article thirty-three, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
The motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article thirty-four, to see if the town, to hear the reports of the town offices, boards, and committees, and to act thereon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How mundane. All those opposed, please say nay. Did we have, Mini Theater, any nays? Ayes, I mean. No. I do this purposely to confuse you. Okay, room F-101? It's called humor-ing the moderator. I guess so. Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer-collector with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the fiscal year beginning July one, 2020 in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section forty-four. And again, I'll dispense with a further reading of the article. And under Article thirty-five, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article. Again, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article thirty-six is an article that was passed over by that previous vote. Article thirty-seven, I believe, was passed over at the same time by that previous vote. Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to assist the Addiction Referral Center in Marlborough in its efforts to provide assistance to persons from Hudson and surrounding communities, and again, I won't read the rest of the article. And under Article thirty-eight, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the subject matter of this article. Again, anything to be said? If not, a call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Mini Theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried. The vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map of the town of Hudson as most recently amended by including the following land, which is currently zoned in the M-three zone, so that said land is also in the adaptive reuse overlay district pursuant to Section five point ten of the protective zoning bylaws of the town of Hudson, or take any action relative thereto. And if there's no objections, I'll dispense with a reading, further reading of that article. And under Article thirty-nine, the Finance Committee recommends, the Finance Committee, if any, will, recommendation will be made at town meeting. Mister Clark?
Mister Moderator, we had a split vote on this article, and we therefore have no recommendation.
Okay. Therefore, we do not have a motion one way or the other. This is a petitioned article by property owners on Tower Street. They're here to make their presentation, but they're not registered voters. Therefore, they can't make the motion themselves. Would anybody else care to make, recommend the subject matter of the article? Anybody?
Yes.
So, is that seconded?
Yes.
Seconded, okay. It's been moved and seconded to recommend the subject matter of the article. And because it's zoning, it'll be two-thirds vote. Could you please introduce yourself? No, no, down, down there.
Hi, my name is Shaker Mehta, and this is my wife, RT Mehta. Together, we own Sixty-Eight Tower Street. Sixty-Eight Tower Street is a, is a brick... Is a brick, brick building and a tin, tin building on Tower Street.
Yeah, can, you may have to, we may have to allow you to take your mask off so people can hear you.
Thank you, sir.
We don't want, just because we can't hear you isn't a reason not to vote.
So, the brick building was, has been there for a long time, and the, has been used as a woolen combing mill. We have been in the business of doing fabric, fabrics. So what we, what we want to show, show to you is, like, over the years, the entire neighborhood around our Sixty-Eight Tower Street has been converted into various degrees of residential, residential, leaving only our property as the only, only industrial, what do you say, island in the middle of complete residential. So, so in ninety-eight, eighty-eight, Littlebrook had a bunch of apartments built there. Then the house, couple of houses came up in front of our property, and then eventually nuts clearing, six, six houses in front of the Thirty-four Tower Street. And then the biggest change was the Thirty-four Tower Street A-Rod, which completely took out all industrial area and left the Sixty-Eight Tower Street as the only industrial area in this entire part of central Hudson. So we are requesting the, the A-Rod to be extended from Thirty-four Tower Street to include Sixty-Eight Tower Street. That gives us options to, to develop the thing, the, the property in line with the, the zoning rules of the town of Hudson. The Hudson Planning Board has approved our, our project. As mentioned by the Finance Committee, four approved and three disapproved. We're looking for approval from the town of Hudson to include this as a, to be in the A-Rod district so that we can develop it further, and it'll definitely increase property values for the entire neighborhood because it'll keep in, in line with the, the cohesive nature of the residential district, which is completely around the place. It'll keep a consistent residential zoning. And to add the, in this property, if at all, residential units will be limited to the brick building. Eleven units is all we can do anyways, and it's only five point six percent of the hundred and ninety-plus units, which have already been approved at Thirty-four Tower Street. And development, if, if needed, can be done at a later time. The, the reason that, what we're trying to solve is like, what do you say, many, many issues, one of, one of which is like the industrial, or trucking, commercial tractor trailers, fifty-three feet coming into the property because that's, it's a warehouse and industrial space. And a lot of people, including our neighbors, have complained about having this industrial trucks coming and going out of our property. We want to be, what do you say, good neighbors and listen to everybody and convert this into a partly residential, and also it's like, keep the metal buildings to be, to be some kind of like, commercial retail, and so that it, it is in line with the property. The other thing that we want to do is like, the, the main, the main, what do you say, the bus stop for the Well Street and up on the hill and stuff is on our prop, is on our property. The school bus stops there. Lot of cars come into our parking lot to pick up the kids, especially in the wintertime, and that's okay. But unfortunately, so do trucks come at three o'clock to pick up all of the stuff. And so it's like, we want to be cognizant of the fact that we want to be good with the children and people walking there and stuff like that. So a yes vote will, will, what do you say, better our property, what do you say, increase what the town will get. No burden on this, on the infrastructure because we already have, it used to be a woolen mill, and we already have the infrastructure for big large sewer, big electrical connections. Everything is in place for that. Reduce industrial air pollution, noise pollution, and it'll, what do you say, retain the character of the neighborhood. And of course, more importantly, issues for, no issues for children and the drop-offs and pickup and things like that. What we want to do with the, the metal building is like, to bring it to look more like homes, make a good facade, and develop it in character of the entire neighborhood. We've been in the fabric business, and what do you say, maintaining the old brick building is something that we've done well in the, in Pawtucket, where we have like a hundred and fifty-year-old Salzman building, and we've kept it exactly the same. We have Donald Lane also in another town, which also, we have kept it with the brick buildings and stuff like that. Brick buildings, we love. And we will keep the brick building as is. We want to, what do you say, make this, the, so we're requesting you to approve the A-Rod to include our property so that we can make further development and, and use this opportunity. Do you have anything to say? That's it, thank you, sir.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Lucy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fred Lucy, Ridge Road. Is anyone here from the planning board that can confirm on page three that the planning board approved this project? Thank you.
Anybody from the planning board?
This parent was here about...
Previous.
Half an hour ago.
The town clerk, I believe, has a letter stating... I'll let her read it. Do we have anybody from the planning board? Okay, this is the letter from, actually, it's a letter from the Director of Planning and Community Development, Mr. Hunter. And it's addressed to Mr. Durant. And it says, "Planning Board Recommendation on 2020 Annual Town Meeting Article 39. Dear Mr. Durant, please be advised, the planning board conducted a public hearing on June 2, 2020, for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting Article 39 pertaining to placing the Adaptive Residential Overlay District onto, onto 68 Tower Street. After consideration, considerable discussion, and input from the public, the planning voted three in favor and one against to recommend approval of Article 39 to town meeting. If you require any additional information, please contact Mr. Hunter." So, that's what the planning board, in effect, did have a hearing and did approve it by three to one. Okay. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Do we know how many units are being proposed to go in there?
Yes, 11. Only 11, which will go into the brick building.
The second question I have, if it's going to be resold from converting to residential, do we know what the impact to the tax revenues for that property is? Is there anybody here who might be able to speak to that?
The tax revenues will go up because the value, overall value will go up. And it's not going to be just the residential. It'll be partly commercial, like a convenience store and, and the RT Fabrics and Home and the consignment store.
Question from the mini theater?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Mark Terrasama, 13 Carter Street. Could, would it be possible for the Finance Committee to speak to why some members chose not to support this article since the planning board is not here to give such a rationale? Thank you.
Mr. Clark, do you discern that question?
I could speak for myself, but I would not be able to speak on behalf of the other committee members.
Traditionally, the Finance Committee has no recommendation. They, as a group, they have no position. Obviously, each and every one has a position, excuse me, has a position, but they have to speak for themselves. That's not a very adequate answer, I know. Mr. Massa?
Andy Massa, 15 Michigan Drive. I'm a member of the Finance Committee, but I'll speak as a citizen of the town. It's unclear to me why this particular property was excluded originally from the overall AOC zone. The one that we've already approved is 34 Tower Street. That includes 196 apartments. I support this being included in the AOC. It's a small impact to the town. Sewerage water is not a problem. It's only got 11 apartments in it. Traffic, et cetera, is a much larger problem that's already been planned for remediation at 34 Tower Street. I support this article. Thank you.
Anything else to be said? Sir, yes.
Andy Horvitz, 12 Old North Road. I'm also on the Finance Committee, and I'll just speak as a citizen myself. I echo Mr. Massa's comments. I would just add that, you know, under the adaptive reuse zoning, in this case, the affordable housing requirement is 15% of new units. The petitioners here have committed to meeting that with two affordable housing units out of the 11 they intend to build.
Thank you. Anything else to be said or any comments? This is two-thirds vote because this is zoning. As I said, on all the other two-thirds vote, you may make it unanimous if you wish. I will now call for the vote on this. All those in favor of the motion to recommend the subject matter of the article, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Many theater, did you have negative votes? Room F-101, did you have negative votes?
Zero.
Okay. We have one negative vote in the auditorium. If there are six or fewer negative votes within the authority of the moderator, I have a right and an expectation to declare the motion is passed unanimously. Therefore, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Now, Article 40. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,680 to be expended to cover the cost of OARS Inc. for the purpose of water quality monitoring of the Assabit River in Hudson and of the control of invasive water chestnut plants in the Assabit River in Hudson. And under Article 40, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of the subject matter of this article. Anything to be said under Article 40? If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Many theater?
There's a question in the mini theater.
Excuse me? Oh, there is, okay. I didn't, I didn't see him in the camera. Okay, sir, can you, before I declare the vote, can you, you have a question? Can you state your name again?
Hi, Ricky Gellin, 94 Central Street. I was wondering if the two members of the Finance Committee who didn't vote in favor of the adoption could speak as to why?
Two members who voted against it, could they answer why?
Sean Sadowski, 17 Plant Ave., member of the Finance Committee. I voted against this because I felt it was the DCI's requirement to take care of this and not Hudson's.
Anything else? It is, the Finance Committee did recommend it by a five to two vote. Anything else to be said on the Finance Committee's recommendation? Is there anybody from mini theater or room F-101? If not, again, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Many theater?
Yes.
Room F-101?
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is carried, it's the vote of the meeting, and I so declare it. Article 41. There is no Article 41. Just seeing how many people are still awake. Therefore, quite obviously, our last act of social distancing, and this was told to us by our health inspector, we have to exit the meeting in socially distant formula. So, don't, there's a tradition in Hudson Town meetings, as soon as I call for a motion to adjourn, don't get in the way of the doors because you're going to get trampled down. We can't have that tonight. So, anyway, I will, with a great deal of reluctance, entertain a motion to adjourn. And that's seconded? Okay. I read in the Boston Globe this morning, in North Andover, a motion to adjourn is not debatable. So, we will not have a debate, even though we have the hall rented until midnight, we will not have a debate. Therefore, I will now call for the motion to adjourn, seen A.D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Is anybody insane enough to vote no? Therefore, the motion is carried. It's carried unanimously. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you. You're welcome.